Meeting is now streaming live on YouTube.
Okay.
Okay. We'll, uh, call the, uh.
I don't see anybody.
Meeting, I don't, I don't know, can we see it? Can we see people?
Hey Julie joined us.
Look at Julie.
I made it, sorry.
All right, nah, that's all right.
Hi Julie.
Okay, let's get rolling.
Okay.
Be a long night. Um, call the meeting, a regular meeting of the Gates Fire District to order at, uh, six thirty-two. Um, as long as Lou's got the American flag, you can, uh, please do the pledge.
Okay, I will.
We all need to stand.
I'll need to stand, okay.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic for which this stands. One nation, under God. And this is all.
Alrighty. Um, I'm not gonna get into doing the emergency exits. Uh, any guests in attendance would like to address the board? Don't hear from anybody, so. Need approval of the prior minutes for, uh. March twenty-sixth?
Make a motion to approve the March twenty-sixth minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cox to approve the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, regular commission meeting minutes, seconded by Commissioner Paduano, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can go with the treasures report now.
Okay.
Uh, just real quick, uh, I just to interject real quick, uh, Ed Trevette just called me, he's having difficulty connecting and listening, he can see us, but he can't hear us, and he can't, um, can't talk to us.
Talks to us.
I actually have him on speakerphone on my phone i- in front of my laptop, so I'm gonna assume that he's gonna be able to hear everything, but I may have to translate a, a few things here and there, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Chief, excuse me. Um, okay, uh, Carol, Julie, where do we want to start?
You wanna start with accounts payable, or you wanna do the treasures report?
Um. Start with the treasure report, like we normally do, right?
Yeah, that sounds good. Does everyone have a copy of it?
Yep.
Yep.
And then just, I just wanted to note that, um, those funds have been transferred over to the reserve account. But they're having some, um, I don't know about difficulty over at Bank of Castile, but I guess they got inundated with, uh, the small business loans. And.
Yeah.
So it's, it just, uh, there was a little bit of.
Guys was, uh, from their bank was on TV discussing the loan, so, yeah.
So that's why you don't see it in this report, you'll see it next month.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we pay the treasures reporter, record as identified here from Carol.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cox to, uh, approve the treasures report, seconded by Dana Paduano, Commissioner Paduano? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, as I'm looking through this, and, uh, and this is the one we're looking at, that, uh, was it in March thirty-first, twenty twenty?
Um.
Yes. The Monroe County Sheriff's, uh, Civil Bureau return of garnishment to employee.
Louis, can you get any closer to your mic or something? We can't quite hear you.
I, I, I just got a question, the Monroe County, uh, Sheriff, uh, Civil Bureau return of garnishment to employee. Uh, there was a line item on there for, uh, it was backed us, it was, uh, one thousand two hundred and forty. Or do we need to discuss that, if it's a personnel issue, we need to.
Missed that one. Good catch, Lou.
You know, so.
Do we know what's at the fore, Carol?
Uh, that probably should be done in executive session.
That's what I said.
Okay. All right.
The other question I do have is the reimbursement, uh, for emails to the Gage Childcare Department.
Yep. They, they, um, they pay a portion, they pay for like thirty slots of the email.
Okay, I understand.
We get that annually from them.
Okay. Okay.
Another, another thing on there that, uh, refund from Hurtland, that's related to not, not using the swipe clock anymore, so the return to monies for the year.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just get your mark.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Good catch, Lou, thank you.
We're on a problem, we're off, I just rolled it. Okay, thank you.
We had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, you wanna do the monthly disbursements next?
Sure.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Caminelli to approve the, uh, monthly disbursements.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Cox, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then, um, if you wanna go to the P and L?
Okay.
Okay, I, uh, had a conversation with Julie this morning, um, she was, or this afternoon, she was having difficulty doing the comparison that we had asked for. Um, so she's gonna work on that and try and get it to us on, uh, the next meeting, is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
Very good.
Good job, Julie, just trying to keep up to everything.
Yeah. There's a lot going on.
Everybody, for that matter, but this is great. Carol and Donna?
Thank you.
And Adam, you're on here too, trying to keep us all connected, so good job as a team.
I got a, I, I got a question on the profit and loss, is there a, uh, and I know where's a, uh, in regards to the COVID nineteen expenditures, is, is that gonna re- reflect on here? Eventually? Will that be populated on this? Or it be a separate?
Well, it'll have to be, right, if we're gonna put it through.
It's on here, we, we created a, an account number, um, maybe five twenty-five, I wanna say, six hundred, something like that.
Okay.
No, that's another one, it, it'll show up on here.
It's five sixteen.
Five, there, thank you, Donna, five sixteen, five twenty-five, something like that.
Seven twenty-five.
Oh gee, thank you.
You're welcome.
So there must not be any expenses showing up yet.
Okay, well, I just, I just needed to ask, I was just looking. You said it was five fifteen?
Five sixteen.
Five six, five sixteen.
Five sixteen, seven twenty-five, and we named it COVID nineteen, so you'll see that, it'll stick out.
Um, I got five sixteen, seven hundred, and five sixteen, zero, zero, zero.
That means, there must have been no expenses yet.
Okay.
Paid out.
All right.
I gotta know.
Okay, I just questioned that, that's all.
Hmm?
Okay. But we are keeping track of it, chief has been putting out, uh, the instructions, uh, for, you know, goods that were used, PPE, um, all of the equipment, so. I know they are keeping track of it.
Okay, good, that's great, that's all the question I had on this, uh, uh, if it was for a motion, I make the motion to, uh, accept the profit and loss, uh, budget as stated.
Okay. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Caminelli to approve profit and loss as stated, second?
Paduano, seconds.
Uh, Commissioner Paduano, second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Now you wanna go to the vouchers? AP? I have to switch screens here, sorry.
Those vouchers being what we already approved, right, we saw earlier?
Yep.
Yes, and I got everybody's signed form back.
You got everybody's signed form back?
I think. Did I get yours, Chris?
No, you didn't get mine, but I'm gonna send it after the meeting.
Yep.
I figured I'd be approved at the meeting, so I'd send it after the meeting.
Yep.
Everybody's reviewed, uh, the vouchers, and, uh, everybody but Commissioner Holfelder is signing for them, anybody have any questions on them?
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Did you think there was too much stuff in there? And the vouchers?
A little bit of redundancy with sending the voucher, the invoice, and the, the receipts, but, um, if everybody wants to, anybody wants to see the receipts, then we'll leave them in. What's everybody's feeling?
I, I appreciate just seeing the statements, if we really got a details to the receipts, the doubles in the details, I think that's what Julie could track for us, right, if we had to pull it out, look for it.
Yeah.
But if it's on the statement, and Julie's reviewed it, or has a receipt to go with that statement, she's already done the due diligence, I think we're fine just seeing the statement.
Just Julie, Julie, reference to the, uh, item I brought up to you today at the, uh, admin building.
Yes.
You think we should still have this, uh, listed completely with the vouchers and et cetera, as well as that sign-off sheet?
I would think that invo- that invoice would still show up, I, you know, I was referring to, if you looked at the voucher, some of them, like she had all the gas receipts, Shannon prepares that, by the way, Shannon does, uh, puts that all together. Um, and she put all those receipts together, so I'm just thinking, sometimes there's too much in, there might be too much in there, so if you just wanna see the voucher and the invoice, and then if you want any supporting documents, I mean, it'll be with the hard copy, but if you guys wanna see the supporting documents, we can, uh, certainly attach those, but if you think just the voucher and the invoice is enough.
That's fine, that's fine.
That'll eliminate a lot of that paperwork, but you would still see that whole invoice, Dana.
Okay.
Chairman, do you wanna make a motion, I'll make a motion that we follow that going forward during this time, or?
Just the invoice and, uh, the voucher?
Yes, sir, for all, for all credit card type purchases, whether it be fuel or other. I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cox that, uh, during this, uh, COVID nineteen br- uh, issue, that, uh, we just, uh, review the voucher and the invoice, and we don't have to, uh, have the receipts done.
The receipts, the receipts will remain on file.
Yeah, uh, everything else be with the hard copy, but as far as what they're sending out to review and scanning, the, it'll just be the voucher and the, uh, invoice.
Thank you.
That good with everybody?
Yeah, that's one, I just wanna chime in, I know I had something pre-arranged with Julie that I would go in there Friday, but it seems that it worked out much better than I can go, I went in there this morning at ten o'clock, and reviewed all the vouchers, all the invoices, hard copy, signed them, and, uh, that, that way, it got s- some eyes on it, the, the whole package. I will continue doing that, as long as everybody's agreed to that, to go in on Thursday morning to sign off. I have to go in there anyways, okay, and sign the checks, and also, uh, the payroll checks, so there's another set of eyes.
Perfect.
Perfect. But as far as, uh, this meeting, um, just, uh, the voucher and, uh,
Yep.
Receipts or invoice. Is that okay?
Sufficient.
And I just had one more question on, um, cause Dan mentioned.
We gotta finish the Commissioner Cox's motion, I need a second.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Caminelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now Julie, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, okay, um, just Dan mentioned the credit card, so you just wanna see the credit card statement, uh, you don't wanna see all the attachments to it? Does that sound right?
I, I, I don't know why we need to see all the statements, as long as, I mean, I'm sorry, all the receipts, if we can confirm, somebody has confirmed that they've made that alignment, I know that we've marked it up at times and said not delivered, therefore, we didn't pay it on some of the vouchers, I would think that's sufficient to do with a credit card, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, the paperwork is available, it's not that we're not following the process, it's just a matter of for what we're trying to review and see during this time of COVID nineteen, it just makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Good business practice, good business practice, and yet we're still following our procedures, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. All's that, Julie?
Oh, yes.
Carol?
Yeah, just a note, um, I did receive an email that the treasures training, or the accounting training was moved to July, mid-July, whether that really happens or not, I guess we'll, we'll have to wait and see.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Alrighty, thank you. See, we'll go with the, uh, secretary's report.
Okay, so we have Assistant Chief Cooley distributed revised administrative order twenty dash zero, zero, four to all personnel regarding COVID nineteen response changes. Chief Boobal distributed, uh, informational bulletin twenty dash zero, one, three to all personnel regarding Group Five Captain. Um, Chief Boobal distributed informational administrative order twenty dash zero, one, one to all personnel regarding updated radio designations. Chief Boobal distributed, informational bulletin twenty dash zero, one, four to all personnel regarding COVID nineteen notes for week number three. I would like to request electronic signatures from all of the commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner Caminelli and now Commissioner Hancock. Um, just so that if I need something signed, that I would be able to have that on hand, I would obviously communicate that to you if I needed your signature for something, but I was hoping that everybody would agree to being able to do that.
You have mine, right, Donna?
Yes, I have yours already, Lou.
Donna, what does that require, stop it and just see in the office?
Nope, I just need you to take a picture of your signature, and if you could email it to me.
Very well.
Okay.
Okay, everybody in agreement with that?
That's fine with me.
All right, thank, thank you, it's just gonna cut down on, uh, us having to go into the office and with the social distancing, staying home and everything, so, all right?
Good.
Okay, Donna?
Thank you. Chief Boobal distributed revised administrative order twenty dash zero, zero, nine to all personnel regarding COVID nineteen pre-duty medical screening, along with the updated sign-in to eleven P dash O S pre-screening form. Assistant Chief Cooley distributed informational bulletin twenty dash zero, one, five to all personnel regarding out of office for Chief Boobal, and along with that, also a press release. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Uh, chief's report, no report, assistant chiefs report.
All right, I'm gonna shuffle through all my papers. All right, so for the munch, the month of March, uh, two hundred and sixty-nine calls for service, that's down ninety-six calls from twenty nineteen with eight hundred and ninety-six members attending.
It's down ninety-six calls from last year?
Yes, ninety-six.
Okay. Thank you.
Aye.
Um, I, we have, uh, as far as firefighter status update, I was notified on three twenty-seven that, uh, firefighter Ryan Hooper and firefighter Doug Grzinski, uh, turned in their equipment. Uh, I have not received any letters of resignation or letters of intent to go life, but, uh, I'm sure the captain of Group Five will submit those to the chief's office when they're available.
Good.
Uh, COVID nineteen update, uh, the fourth operational period is ending tomorrow. Uh, the next operational period IEP will be finalized and sent out in tomorrow's, uh, seventeen hundred email. Uh, changes in some roles have occurred due to, uh, Chief Boobal's absence, they will be documented in the IEP. Uh, right now, we have no sicknesses due to COVID nineteen, and, uh, we have completed some of our objectives while others are coming close to completion. Uh, reminder that tomorrow's Good Friday, and it's a holiday for the administrative staff. And I have some, uh, equipment purchases. The first one, uh, I'm looking to purchase the radio equipment that we discussed at the last commission meeting, um, that will be for the dispatch office to communicate and monitor multiple trucks' talk groups. Uh, I have a quote from Motorola for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents for the equipment. Uh, that quote includes a forty percent discount and is on New York State bid pricing. Uh, I also have a quote from Skywave Communications, who is our preferred vendor, uh, for the install of that equipment for eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that grand total is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents. Uh, with the thirty-five thousand that we discussed from the last meeting, uh, the balance of the two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents, uh, I believe can come out of the radio services accounts, uh, to cover that remainder of the cost. So I'm looking for approval for that.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Doug it.
The total, chief?
Uh, grand total is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, Commissioner Caminelli made the motion to approve the purchase of, uh, an installation of the, uh, radio equipment and dispatch for, uh, amount quoted by the chief, you got that, Donna, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, need a second?
A second.
You had a second for that.
Commissioner Paduano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Lieutenant List is looking to purchase two taxi ray three single gas detectors from DeVal Safety for four hundred and thirty-six dollars, thirty-eight cents. Uh, these detectors are budgeted, uh, and it is the bu- uh, below the budgeted amount, and the pricing is New York State price.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cox to approve the purchase of the taxi ray meters.
Doug it.
Seconded by Commissioner Paduano, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right.
Okay, thank you, uh, thirdly, Captain Mendelary is looking to purch- uh, to spend twelve thousand and forty dollars uh, on bailout ropes from MES. Uh, this is an unbudgeted amount, if you recall, when we discussed this issue at the end of last year, um, the issue arose and the expiration dates arose, uh, after the finalization of the, the budget. Uh, we transferred monies from, uh, the operating budget into, to a six G account to cover the expenditure this year. Um, the quote that he has from MES does, uh, meet or exceeds better pricing of New York State price.
What was the, what was the cost, chief?
Twelve thousand forty. One, two, zero, four, zero.
Thank you. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward on that, as we discussed earlier, that it was gonna expire, we've gotta do it.
Correct. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Cox to approve the, uh, purchase of the, um, F D O, F D equipment?
Second.
Commissioner Holfelder, second?
That was, uh, that was actually Dana.
Ah, okay, Commissioner Paduano, second, all in favor?
Thanks, Chairman.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the only thing I would, uh, probably need to add on that is, uh, I'm thinking as a matter of procedure, you're gonna need to pass a resolution to, to pull the money out of the six G.
Okay, yep. Did you happen to think of that, Miss Donna, Donna?
Um, I did not know about it, so I did not prepare for that.
Tim, Mr. Assistant Chief, this is just in replacement for ropes that we have now based on expiration and all that, right, this isn't anything in addition to, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, just for the record, you know what I mean, it's good to say that we're not trying to enhance anything here, we're just trying to maintain what we have on the apparatus.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, chief.
Yep.
Okay, um, we need to move forward with a, have a motion or a resolution to remove the money out of the six G account, communications acco- or no, when, uh, I don't even have the account number here, um, from the six G account into the general fund. So, we need a, somebody to make a motion for the resolution.
I'll make the motion to move forward on that for the resolution that we go forward, taking this out of the six G account, based on that we didn't know, we did the budgeting.
And the dollar amount is, uh, for that, to take out of that six G account?
Twelve thousand forty dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so Commissioner Cox made the motion to, uh, do a resolution for the, uh, move, uh, of twelve thousand and forty dollars from the six G account into the operating account for the purchase of, uh, replacement rescue ropes due to expiration dates, seconded?
Second.
Doug it.
Commissioner? Paduano?
Either one, full folder or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be right there.
We're not doing a roll call vote?
Oh, that's right, roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Hancock, aye, Commissioner Caminelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Holfelder?
Aye.
Commissioner Paduano?
Aye.
Okay, it was approved by one hundred percent, the board.
Thank you.
And this is going up to the capital reserve fund?
Yes, capital reserve.
It's coming out of the capital reserve?
That's what we have to do the resolution on.
Yes.
The specific six G account?
Yes, it's the capital reserve account, and that agrees that, yes, it needs to reflect that it's coming out of the, the capital reserve.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of it.
So when, so when would we be, when, you want that out now, or when is it gonna be coming?
You can't take it out for thirty days.
Take it out for thirty days.
Yeah, all right.
After thirty days.
We didn't even buy it, yeah. Whenever Donna gets it in the, uh, the, the newspaper, then we can pull it thirty days after that.
Right. So what date roughly are we looking?
Thirty days from today, once they make the resolution, it's not from when it's, um, in the paper.
Right, turns out to be in public, as long as we voted on it here tonight, it's thirty days.
Thirty days from tonight.
Okay, so we're looking at mid-May at least.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, the Suffolk Quint update, uh, we received the pre-construction paperwork after our pre-construction meeting, that's all squared away and set. Um, they did send us a change order, uh, for the changes that were discussed in that meeting. Uh, the price of the truck has gone down by just under fifteen hundred dollars. Um.
Chief, are those, are those changes, chief, based on Gates or based on the manufacturer?
Um, mainly on Gates, uh, so like, um, some of the stuff that was that the manufacturer does already have in that model truck, we're like, yeah, we don't, we don't need that, pull that out of there. And then some of the stuff that they didn't have, we added, and so there was a little bit of up and down, but, uh, at the end of the day, we, we came down less than, than what was originally quoted, so.
Super, uh, my biggest concern was B, is if you're giving something up that you didn't want to, or that we have to discuss that as contractual.
No, not, not at all, I think we did, uh, very well in that meeting.
Great, cause we bid that the way you wanted it, and if it's not gonna meet that spec, then we need to go backwards and find out, maybe something else.
Not at all, not at all. Yep. Uh, repeater install updates, uh, five out of the six Monroe County. Repeater install updates, five out of the six Monroe County provided radio repeaters have been installed as of today. Just a, just a reminder that once those bills arrive for the installs, we're going to have to pass a resolution again so that the, the monies can come out of the communications fund to pay for those installs, and that was discussed last year as well.
Right. You want to do that prior to, so that we could pay the bill?
Well, I don't, I don't have a dollar amount, so it's going to be tough to pass a resolution, so.
All right. Thank you.
And then lastly, I have, I'm requesting executive session for a personnel matter.
Thank you, chief.
Hey, chief, I need to go back to just for a second, okay? As far as the Quint goes, how long are they in construction or that?
I haven't gotten any firm dates. The contract, if my memory serves me, said 16 to 18 months, but informally, when we were talking, they were saying maybe 12-ish. So, but I haven't, I haven't received anything official.
Okay, hopefully if, if this passes this pandemic, you guys will be able to go out there, but I certainly hope that happens, but they can always do a virtual tour, couldn't they?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think the tough part will probably be the final inspection, but we'll, we'll, we'll cross that vision when we get to it.
Okay, good. Good. Yes, question I have. Thanks, chief.
Yeah. It's all I have.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the projects, the five-year plan is in progress. Rooftop units, the finishing up on that is on hold till we get through the COVID-19. Station three rear parking lot. That's still status quo. Building utilization committee, that's in progress. The parking lot replacement for station one. Got a couple of quotes that I thought you said, Dan?
I have one budgetary quote, but we put the whole thing on hold based on vendors are coming out to see us and all, so that's pretty much on hold right now.
All right. Yep, that's what I got. Chairman Hancock's report. The commission video conferencing vote was left out of the last meeting, and so we did it via email, and we just approved, motion to approve it tonight. Motion was made by myself, seconded by Commissioner Commonelli. The commission was polled, and everybody approved it, so I believe it's 100%. You want to do it again?
Yeah, let's ratify that.
Just ratify it tonight?
Yes, because I did not receive a response from everybody.
Okay, all righty, then we will, I made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Commonelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Okay, pavilion floodlights, there was an issue. Somebody wrote a work order that they were on all the time. They won't be on all the time. They've been replaced. We replaced LEDs, and they are on the electronic eye, so they are only on at night. And I'm gonna refer to the chief's request for executive session. Okay, Vice Chairman Commonelli's report, please.
Okay, I just want to reiterate again that, number one, I will be going in there Thursday mornings at 10 o'clock, okay, to take care of all the vouchers and all the invoices and payroll and incidentals that have to be signed, so that way my eyes will go on the complete package. And that way it'll be all prepared before Thursday night's meeting. All right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holfelder's report.
I'm just thankful you, the team's doing a good job getting this technology up to speed and letting us get our meetings going. I have no report.
Commissioner Cox?
I'd like to follow up that we, I'd like to make a motion that we spend $2,990 for new equipment needed to get the internal phone system between headquarters and station two up and running.
Okay.
So I made the motion. I need a second.
Second. Made by Commissioner Cox to spend $2,990 on the phone system for station two, seconded by Commissioner Holfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I know you told me I was going to pressure. Now that work is being done by Adam.
Yes, sir.
Yep, that's my call. Okay, good.
And it's the same thing we had to do to station three a few years ago, so that's why we're confident about the repair here.
That's great.
Next item up then is, I'd like to make a motion that we spend $509. It's $509 to buy a new, to buy a power drain snake. It's something that we need for all the facilities. It's not just isolated to one area, and we'll be using it time and time again for the maintenance for all of our drains. As Chris, Commissioner Holfelder said, that it's, it's going to be a much-needed and well-used tool that we can use for not only our buildings, but our truck rooms and all the drains. So I'd like to make a motion. We do have a quote, and there will be a second quote followed up to Donna before the purchase orders placed, and it's just for material. There is no labor here, so it's a pretty straightforward purchase.
Where are we, where are we going to purchase it from? Do we know?
Donna, the Home Depot was where Joe got the quote from for the $509, so I believe that's going to go unless you could find it someplace else, but I, yes, $509 from Home Depot.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on the issue?
It's a well, it's a, it's a going to be a well-used tool. We have a lot of drains that need to be maintained.
Yeah.
And then the last thing that we just brought up earlier tonight that we, I had as a follow-up from last meeting, we're going to move further, forward with Cedar Creek landscaping.
Nick, we got to back up and finish the $509 for your snake tool. Okay, Commissioner Cox made the motion for the purchase of five, at $509 for a power drain cleaner tool. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Commonelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dave. One last thing, following up from last month's commission meeting, landscaping, I followed up with the owner, Andy Vargo, with Cedar Creek. They will honor and have agreed to with the prevailing wage requirements that we have for all landscaping, so I'd like to make improvement that we go forward again with our preferred supplier Cedar Creek for doing all landscaping. That would be around all three fire stations. They invoice us, and Jim Worth will continue to be chairman of the board of directors, will continue to be the point of contact with them.
Okay, do we have the prevailing wage statement?
I don't know that we have it on a hand. We haven't issued them a purchase order. We just have a verbal and a phone number for Donna to be working with. I believe her name was Karen on the internal office, if I have it right, Donna, right?
Yeah.
So we, Andy honored it and said, call the office, and we'll, we'll get you what we need. He knows what's required, and he has no issue with that.
All right, then.
Again, it's, it's, it's time and, it's time and material, so I don't really have a dollar value today on, on what, what the cost of that would be.
Well, they're still one of our preferred vendors. That's what we were looking for, to keep them on the list and to keep using them, so.
Yep.
And we just need approval to move forward and, and use them again this year.
Yep, so I make a motion that we move forward with that.
I'll make a second. We keep Cedar Creek on board with us to take care of our outdoor landscaping and needs for the district.
Commissioner Cox made the motion to keep Cedar Creek as our landscaper for the district. Commissioner Holfelder seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dave.
End it, Dan?
Yes, sir.
All righty, who's up next? Commissioner Paduano?
Just request the executive session for the procedure and notification to personnel.
Okay. Anybody else got anything for the good of the organization here?
Lot of time.
Okay, then I will look for a motion.
I'll make that. We go to the exact question.
Motion made by Commissioner Commonelli at 7:12 to seconded by Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Holfelder to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding the medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody on the phone with Adam?